We are now recording.
All right, we have any minute. All right. So what is first on the agenda?
We have a rezoning request for 111, 12 South Main.
It's a conditional rezoning.
And it's for the property, the Dewey.
The what from?
The Dewey, yeah, the Dewey property.
The Dewey's.
On South Main Street.
Okay.
From North Carolina, you live right there.
Yeah.
North Carolina, that's right. Is everybody familiar with it? It's south of 10th Street. Right at the corner of 10th and Main, there's a brick house on the, if you're going southbound, that the Wellers own. On the right-hand side, it used to be Joe Levy's house, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that house faces 10th Street, but it's.
Faces 10th Street, but once you get past that, there's an open field and an older white clapboard, almost like a farmhouse looking thing, before you get to O'Reilly's. So it's basically between O'Reilly's and that house that used to be owned by Joe.
And that little triangular Christmas tree used to sit in his apartment now.
Now, you ready?
Yes.
All right, we have a public hearing scheduled for conditional rezoning. Request from NEC Investments, represented here by Eric Nash. Conditional rezoning would modify the zoning designation from the current R1 residential to BG general business with proffered conditions. Additionally, the request would permit the development of as many as 80 mini warehouses. That's still an accurate figure? Okay. The subject property is located at 1112 South Main, and that's the address for the little clapboard house on the right there. And it's designated as Non-Away County Tax Map Number 5838-4-2-11A, 12 and 13, as well as 5838-5-12. The purpose of it is, and I'll point to the map very quickly. The property lies here approximately. It's a couple of these small little lots, and then this portion up right here. Adjacent to it is the BG already, where Eric's building the duplexes, Goodwill, and then you have the O'Reilly's Auto Parts here. It is adjacent to the BG on two sides, okay? I did have several people ask me, why was it zoned residential years ago since it was on Main Street? And the best I can tell you is, this is part of the properties that were brought into the town as part of the annexation or boundary adjustment that was done by the town in the early 90s. And I'm going to guess that when the town did that, they sat down and talked maybe with the property owners, and everybody said, this is what we would prefer. And where this RS1 district was also created, and then these R1 districts. I think that the town wanted, not necessarily to prevent it, but certainly to have the ability so somebody couldn't just walk in and say, I can put a gas station here, or I can put a 24-hour longer nap, something that may be intrusive on some of these other residential units. Property question is right here.
How much are we, how much is, how much is gonna be rezoned?
He's asking for rezoning of the full 4.0 acres.
Only, only six tenths of an acre will actually be used.
Yeah, but we're talking about rezoning the whole thing.
Correct.
Which, which ends up, we might as well figure the whole thing's gonna be used.
Well, that's why we did as a conditional rezoning, is that if you do have some concerns about what may come next, that additional activities that could be more impactful than many storage could come back to you guys if it's gonna be a restaurant, or a drive-thru, or, or something that would be more intrusive. And you can, as a condition, as part of this rezoning, make that as a condition that Eric or subsequent owners would come back to you and say, hey, with the residual of the property, it, remaining three acres, we'd like to put in.
It will not get sold. It'll be in that.
With his family, Eric's family owns quite a bit of the property.
So on the 10th Street, when you get up to that, and you've got a brick house on that corner, how close does this go to that brick house?
Well, Business General District does allow buildings up to the sides and rear property line, but he does have a requirement that Business General zoning that abuts residential has to provide an impermeable screen, at least six foot tall of evergreen plantings or fences.
Was that person notified?
Yeah, they received a, in fact, they.
She had a letter.
Yeah, she sent a letter.
And she did, she had sent a letter, Ms. Weller.
You'll read that?
Letter is dated November 18th, 2021, addressed to Mr. Van Orbeck Town Manager. My name is Joan Weller. I am the owner of the property at 101 10th Street, Blackstone, Virginia. My land is adjacent to the land NEC Investments has purchased. Mr. Nash has been in touch with me about the plans he has for the development of the property, and he has my support.
He was excited about the fact that it's not gonna be heavy-use restaurant, grocery store, whatever.
And again, I think you can put a condition on it, as this was advertised as conditional rezoning, that that condition be anything in addition would come back to the planning commission and council for, for review. You agree with that?
The only thing I would like is instead of having to come back for approval, we are planning on a field of pumpkins back there. I mean, does that need to get approval of? Okay. I just don't wanna have to come back for that.
So you're going with like a Halloween display or something?
Just to sell them at the garden center, pumpkins, corn. We've already, for years, we've been thinking about it.
That, that's not impacted by zoning.
So Eric, can you show on the map where the storage buildings will be?
It'll be the closest to Ms. Weller.
Okay, so the empty lots, that, like where the house is, and then there's lots, and then her house, so it's gonna be in those lots.
It'll be closer for you. Six tenths of an acre or less in that area.
Eric, can I chat out a little bit about some other things that, trying to do a little planning? Town Council has approved and has authorized me to build curb and gutter and sidewalk on that side of the street all the way to Walmart entrance, okay? Haven't had the money to do it. In fact, this January, February, we should see construction start on the section of South Main Street with curb and gutter and sidewalk and storm improvements and paving from 6th Street to 10th Street, okay? The state has given us a $400,000 grant. We have our share put in. Bids have been opened and received, and council's approved the bids, and we did give them some extra time because we don't want them digging up Main Street in an excessive amount of time prior to them being able to get asphalt, because we don't want that just to be a, a three-month odyssey of driving across that gravel and mess, okay? So that'll be coming, and then the next phase would be on, from 10th, maybe not all of it at one time, maybe we get down to, who knows, maybe the entrance to Will Hudgens' property or something, just as far as we can get. But in doing some planning for that, there's gonna be an entrance required. We're gonna have to put in an entrance when we go through there with the curb and gutter, whether it's mini storage or something. But what I've asked Eric if he would consider is, when that curb and gutter goes in, that it will have an entrance sized, and he would reimburse the town for that entrance portion based on a commercial entrance, what it, what the contractor would charge us. And I'm gonna make some assumptions, I don't know if it's true, but Eric, or Jason Walker does much of the concrete work for the town, and he gives us a line item bid, so whenever we bid it out, we'll make sure that'll have a line item for a commercial driveway of 16 feet, which allows a trailer to turn in, and that sort of thing. And that would be constructed at the time that the town comes through there. And I expect to start either this year, coming up in the fiscal year, which would start after the 1st of July, or the year final, to have enough money set aside to do that. The council did vote to go ahead and do that, and with agreement with Eric, if he could reimburse the town for the entrance, the proper entrance right now. He may need to put another culvert in just to widen that entrance now, because Eric has indicated that he'd like to use the existing entrance that's there, but what I don't want him to do is build a big $10,000 entrance and find out it's in the wrong location, it's the wrong size, and we gotta dig it back up and redo it. So you may, for your purposes, have to widen that driveway to get in and out temporarily, and then he work with the town and reimburse us at that time.
I would like to, we could just say, you and I had said that it could be, you know, five to six thousand, I'd like to say $10,000 max or something like that.
That should, should take care of it, okay?
The share of the cost of sidewalks and the curb and gutter, that part of it that's normally in a residential area, the share between the residents, and town makes the residents pay part of that, am I correct?
It is correct.
So what are you gonna do on this commercial area?
I think the town council has an intention that we, because it's commercial, and we wanna have, we're requesting the sidewalk and the curb and gutter to go through there. Usually it's the property owners that pursue us.
So if the property owners are not pursuing you, then you won't pursue that.
I'm gonna ask council not to get 50/50 from everybody.
What do you mean?
Doesn't be my intention.
You said you're not gonna ask.
I'm not gonna ask the property owners to pay the 50% for the curb. Sidewalk is free. We don't, we don't charge for sidewalk. Okay? Sidewalk is on the town's nickel, and it's been that way for about five years. But curb and gutter is a 50/50 split typically. And typically, somebody on Lunenburg Avenue, or Brunswick Avenue, or Birch Street, or wherever comes in and says, hey, we want curb and gutter. The way I've been solving that is that we've been applying for grants, and basically, the town still pays 50%, and the feds, or USDA, or DEC will pay the share for the property owner. But on Brunswick Avenue, for example, we did a lot of curb and gutter down through there six, eight years ago, and everybody put a lien on their property for 50%. Now, if council chooses and they want property owners to pay that half, then so be it. That is the ordinance.
But it's without interest. It's without interest, correct?
It's a interest-free.
Interest-free and until they sell the property or.
What I'm trying to do is delineate between the residential property and commercial properties.
There's no, there's no rule on the book that says there's any delineation. If we follow the rules specific to it, and I really hadn't put much thought to it, but it would be the 50% commercial and 50, or the private and 50% to town.
I have a feeling for the town to even afford that large project out there, it's gonna be a grant project to begin with anyway.
Yeah, and the problem with it is, is the grant cycle, I have to apply several years. It'll be a multi-year deal before we do anything.
Something that's been needed for a long time.
That's an issue, I think, for council to resolve about the 50/50 deal. Because council did make a motion to go ahead and put that curb and gutter and sidewalk all the way down through there a year ago, year and a half ago? Remember when we did it? And I guess there was no discussion about the project being able to be blocked, because one person didn't wanna do it, or two people didn't wanna do it.
Right. There was no discuss. Yeah, the question, I guess, that I'm coming back to is, and not to belabor the point, but right now, most of us, including myself, I have a lien against my house. The question I have is, are we gonna now start doing it at no charge?
I think on this particular project, when council voted to do it, there was, I think the expectation with council was they were gonna charge. Now, y'all can tell me different, and I never brought it up, but council did vote about it a year and a half ago to go ahead and do the project. I haven't put any money, not a nickel aside for it. Will we try to get some grants? Sure, we'll go to VDOT and we'll ask them for whatever we can.
I guess what I'm thinking is, a commercial enterprise is in a better position to pay some of this, certainly with long-term lien with no interest that a residence would have.
Maybe I need to take that back to council and see what their expectations are. Just go back to council and say, do you wanna collect half from everybody? But with the residential, we've always let it be that if it's not majority, it was two-thirds of the block wanted to do it, we did it.
Yeah, but that one's changed.
But it has changed now, the council can, can override it with just one person, but council has not been allowing one person to say no and kill the project. Whereas this instance, if one person came back, would council override them and still do it? Maybe we need to go back to council and have that discussion.
But I'm just thinking, somebody like Walmart has the ability to pay a little bit better than some resident could possibly pay.
And I do think Chesterfield County.
But not the owner of Watkins Jewelry.
They probably have.
Already paid twice.
So the project from 6th to 10th Street, right there, where you're gonna be adding sidewalk, the continuation of sidewalk, those property owners are not being asked to do anything because of grants.
There's already curb and gutter there. We're just replacing curb and gutter between 6th and 10th. If you notice, it's already curb and gutter, but there's not sidewalk in certain, it's real spotty. There's sidewalk in front of one house, and not in front of the next house. Sidewalk, no sidewalk, no sidewalk, sidewalk. So, no, because sidewalk is not charged back to property owner. I haven't even put my toe in that water. We're just gonna finish up the sidewalk. We are replacing some of the curb and gutter.
I think Mr. Watkins is just saying, isn't it fair that the commercial people pay if the residents have to pay?
I guess a decision that council has to face on that time, but, and we'll have to bring it back to them, if it's important enough, as somebody with a lien on the property, we'll go back and talk about it one more time, but I got the impression council wanted to move with it and do the project, so.
I guess that was before I had any interest in this property.
Before you had any interest in the property.
Can, can we clarify what the proffered conditions are on this particular property? One, the six-foot fence?
No, that's already in the ordinance.
Okay.
It's already in the ordinance.
All right.
I think you need to proffer the final.
The four building, the, the actual number of buildings, their size, their use.
Readvertised for up to 80 units.
Okay.
I don't think you need to specify the size. I think he's giving you a layout, a rough plan. What I do think you need to proffer is the agreement on this driveway, that he would pay up to $10,000.
Yeah, I'd like to have a definite big piece.
Now, we're in the future, that when we do that.
80 self-storage units.
Four, four buildings, 20 in each building, 30 by hundreds.
And then up to $10,000 for?
Entrance?
For entrance.
And additional commercial activities that require a structure, not growing pumpkins or not having a vegetable stand, would require coming back to this body to discuss.
Okay.
Because I think just blanket zoning it right now, I think nullifies the effect of what council wanted to accomplish 25 years ago by leaving it residential.
Right.
We have no goal of putting anything else there.
It may not be, may be a viewpoint.
Well, I mean, we always have to.
Agree, I agree, yes.
We never know what's gonna happen in the future.
It's kinda like the same thing we do with Viewmap.
Right.
Put a condition on there, if they wanna do additional, or put something in the front of the building that they had to come back to you guys.
The, the only thing that will change the rest of the property is that the actual home will be demolished. It's the state of repair.
And the third condition that I'm asking, and we, we got, when Goodwill was built, because the road down there is pretty narrow, if you didn't know. One of the things we'd like to do is make sure we've got enough right-of-way, and we asked Goodwill to give us, I believe, 14 feet of right-of-way on that one side. I think the Wellers gave up to 12 feet. If you remember, the town acquired the radius around the Wellers' property, and if you could ask Eric to also dedicate an equivalent amount of what the Wellers did in event we needed to widen the street, and that would be a condition. I think 12.84 feet is what they dedicated.
And what's the setback between the Wellers and this?
Yeah, there is no specific setback unless one is negotiated tonight, because of Business General, you can build adjacent to the property line.
Yeah, that worries me a little bit.
Do you have an idea what it might be?
It would be at least 30 foot from the property line, just 'cause you'll be driving on that side of the building.
Are you willing to put that in, right? Tonight? 30 foot setback on the side of the rear?
But you will have a driveway that drives right down his property line, right?
On this side of the fence, correct.
Will it be the back of the building, or would it be actually a, a drive?
It'll be a drive.
A drive.
So 30, from the driveway.
30 foot from the property line with the building.
From the building.
On that one line.
Correct.
And I assume that you'll have lighting in there for this building too?
Yeah, two per each side of the building, shining directly down. I've already gone over, Ms. Weller showed her the lights.
We do have an ordinance that it can't be a nuisance lighting situation. We've got that covered, so what he does, if it does prove to be a nuisance, then we can ask him to adjourn.
It wouldn't be the lights on the old medical center shining. Real bright.
It's a PVC fence on one side?
Correct.
Mini storage is required to be fenced in, okay? Supposed to be fenced in, and he has the secondary that with the fencing, it needs to be, where you can't see through it.
When did that come into effect? Because there, the ones that are in town, they do not have fencing, so.
Well, as long as I've been here, it's been there, but.
My, our plan is, it's gonna be a remote key entry and all that.
The new one that's being put in there where the car wash is, that is gonna have a fence around it. That does have a fence. If you guys remember Boulder Zoning Appeals, they give a little variance on the ones over there where the car wash was on High Street, that is gonna be fully enclosed, and have a fence around it with the, with the key. And that, so, mini storage has to be fenced, on those portions that are butt residential have to have impervious, or, I don't know if that's the proper term, but you're not supposed to be able to see through it. Six-foot planting, it doesn't mean go to the forestry department and get pines and wait 14 years for them to grow tall enough. It's an evergreen planting of six foot tall that would screen the residential from the Business General. And he can choose that, but he's got the secondary issue that he's got a fence in his mini storage facility, so I think a fence is probably what you don't see that in Bush.
Yeah, the side on Main Street and the side facing the dual property, south towards Walmart, will be a vinyl coated fence, not a one. I wanna, I wanna be able to sit where you can see through it, so there's no mischievous stuff going on the general business side. The sides that abut Ms. Weller and the backside that abuts us would be a vinyl fence.
But the side that abut, we, see, you wouldn't have to have an impervious, because it's only where residential and business abut. You got that little strip in there though, don't you?
Yeah, but it's in commercial.
It is in commercial, okay. So that would make perfect sense, that you wouldn't have to put an impervious on the O'Reilly side, and that's a reason. It only implies we're business abut residential.
It's not all that many yards from your own house, is it?
No, this, I mean, we wanted the land anyway, but for the price they wanted for it, you had to have something on it to generate revenue. That's their only reason this is being done. We wanted to be able to control, 'cause we can see it from our house, I mean. We didn't wanna tractor supply or a Walmart, or just any shopping center coming in, so.
The three proffers about the dedication of right-of-way, equivalent of what the Wellers did. The additional structures, not just activities like pumpkins and such things, but additional structures, business-related structures that go on the property would require a revisit with you guys and the town council. And then the third thing was the entrance to $10,000. I think $10,000 will cover the entrance.
And the 30-foot setback from the building.
To Ms. Weller's.
To Ms. Weller's.
Okay. Any further discussion, or do we need to, we have to close?
Open a public hearing, I guess. You have to open the public hearing.
Open, we need to open the public hearing, okay.
I don't think there's anybody here, unless Eric, would you like to comment on the project? Are we open and closed?
We are, we are open. We've had quite a bit of discussion on the project. Let's close the public hearing. And if anyone felt inclined to make a motion, delighted.
I'll move that we approve the project with the proffers listed.
All right, the rezoning with the proffered conditions as listed by the town manager and the clerk.
And I will tell you, the entrance has been, been discussed. When it's finally constructed, it'll be, we hope, or we expect it'll be directly across from, from Governor Street. So if Governor Street ever developed, and you got a big project being proposed there that Planning Commission's probably gonna see within the next 60 days, it would line up directly with Governor Street, so if that ever became a full-way intersection, or 90-degree intersection, okay?
Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
I'm, I'm going to be stained because of family connection.
All right.
What's up next, Jenny?
All right, the next is the text amendment for bed and breakfast establishments. We have a new buyer of the Grace Line, and we're just trying to make things in a line of how they should have been. I think the previous, only a while, but the four.
About four and a bed and breakfast, but.
But the Grace Line has had six rooms.
The Grace Line has been operating with six rooms as a bed and breakfast for? Twenty years? Eighteen years? And they've got six units. Our ordinance says four units, and so they've been proposed to us as part of the sale of the bed and breakfast to the new owner, wanting to make sure that six units is still viable and legal. Also, they wanted to take out the term home occupation. If you look at those different, uh, uh, two different definitions that Jennifer has up there for you.
It's got the, it's got the breakout of the definitions.
The current says a home occupation. The home occupation, the difference between that and something else is that a home occupation requires you live on site. And they're interested in being able to do this without necessarily living on site, okay? Here's why I'm not disturbed about it so much, is because, if you didn't know, the town of Blackstone and every other community in the state of Virginia is obligated by law to allow an adult care facility with up to eight residents to be considered the equivalent of a single-family home. We have one here in town that has too many residents, is gonna be coming back to this body here before too long to clean up. They're keeping 11, but by law, we have to consider a home care facility or an adult care facility with, not to exceed eight persons staying there, as a single-family home. So this is less than the eight, and less intrusive than I think an adult care facility would be. And the one we have is on High Street, if you're familiar with it. But the state did require that all communities adopt that, simply because, I think everybody were trying to zone it out so you wouldn't have them in your community. And, um, again, probably next month, you're gonna see a request to increase that number from eight to 11 on that particular one, because I think she's keeping 11 now.
But then the person that owns the house does not have to live there.
They, and they don't have to live there. The only thing that they've got to have is they gotta have staff for a certain number of hours a day, and they have to meet certain building code requirements with signs like fire exits and all those kind of things, and handicap entrances, and some of the other building code requirements.
I got a question. When are you going down there? I'd like to go down there with you.
Where?
On High Street.
I've been down there, I was down there last week and talked to her, and she's had some, some personal issues where she'd go back up north and do some stuff. But I can tell you, I, she admittedly told me, I'm keeping eight, and I said, you're supposed to keep, or she said, I was keeping 11. And so she's been forthright about it, but she's keeping more than our zoning currently requires or permits. Next time I go down there.
Yeah, okay.
Go over there and see her. She's usually there, and she's back. She'd gone to New Jersey or New York for several months and wasn't around, now she's back in town. I just happened to hear she was back from the police department.
The, the new residents of the bed and breakfast, they have a house in Blackstone, so they may not be staying there all the time, and one of the owners is in the military, and she may be go out, you know, may go on, when you, I'm sorry, my brain is not working.
Deployment.
Deployment, yeah, she may be deployed at some time, so they just wanted to make sure that they were on the up and up, and that we knew what was going on, so.
Yeah.
I got a question. Let's see, what you got, bed and breakfast establishment, an occupation involving a rental with up to six rooms to overnight guests and offering breakfast meals only to see a guest? But I thought on the bed and breakfast, you could check in, right? If you stayed there all day, you get your meals, right?
You only get breakfast. How do we know? I don't know.
Right, okay. 'Cause I've never heard that. I swear, I've never, I didn't, I didn't know that.
Supposed to be breakfast.
I didn't know that.
Because you don't turn it into a restaurant where people are coming from other locations on site.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
But the different, reason home occupation came out is because specific to our ordinance, home occupation is defined as one where the resident of the home is doing the occupation, and this would eliminate the necessity, by taking the home occupation portion of it out, would eliminate the necessity for them to live there. They're all, they've operated for however many years the Grace Line's been open, is a six unit, and our ordinance says four. How that happened years ago, I don't know, but I am telling you that they've asked for those two accommodations. And I will tell you, the bed and breakfast movement, I think, is popular at one time, but I don't see a lot of people that are asking about those. Airbnb is, I think, a much more popular.
Right.
And you can keep however many rooms you got, as how many stay in an Airbnb. In, in fact, I think Denny Sheffield's house is not an Airbnb, but I think there's, there more than four people down at that house every night. Guy bought it, I think some of them closed it.
So what's the difference between that and bed and breakfast?
Only breakfast?
No, the difference between the two is four to six, and taking out the term home occupation
No, the difference between the two is four to six, and taking out the term home occupation so that people wouldn't have to live there.
No, I mean, between the Airbnb and a bed and breakfast.
Well, Airbnbs are really not regulated very rigidly, I, the only thing, the only real regulations we have is they have to register just so we can collect lodging tax.
Tax, that's it.
And that's about all we've got, there could be Airbnbs pop up, do you know of any new ones that have come up in town? We've got the one on South Main Street.
We operate one out of Masonic Lodge.
The old Masonic Lodge. And, uh, really, the only reason we knew about them is because we had a complaint that, why am I paying meals ta, or lodging tax? And somebody who's leasing out their or renting out their home is an Airbnb, why are they not paying lodging tax? So they are now, but lodging tax has gotten to be, uh, less restrictive, because we, it's following the state code, okay? It's only for a certain number of days, if it exceeds a certain number of days, you don't have to pay lodging tax on it, so, I think it's thirty days now. And our ordinance used to say ninety days. But the state code does say thirty, and that may have to come back to get changed, but the state code trumps.
And you can bear in mind, our rules for the state, you can be less rigid, or excuse me, you've gotta follow state rule or be less rigid.
Okay.
More rigid, excuse me, more rigid.
We have to open the public hearing. Y'all wanna speak on that? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
What do you might like to make a motion?
Well, just, explain to me what motion you really want out of this, I mean, do you wanna just do away with the, the numbers required?
To adopt a new, to adopt a new definition, for the text amendment.
Move to adopt the, the proposed text amendment.
All right, I, I'll do that, I'll move that we adopt a new.
I'll say it.
Text.
All right, all in favor, please say aye, aye.
If I may, because we do have some folks in the audience that are specific to one of the issues, uh, on the agenda tonight, and that is, uh, Farmington sub, well, that's next up anyhow, so that makes sense. Farmington subdivision, road naming, if you guys are familiar.
This piece of property, this is the one we're speaking of, so you can say, right there, and the Yorks live on this piece of property right here. Okay, and this is the piece of property, and a portion of that, a portion of it, has already been divided up as Farmington subdivision, okay? Farmington subdivision, that plaque was filed in two thousand and seven, okay? At the time, as the plaque was recorded, it was recorded with the name Burrows Lane as the road name there, okay? I received a call from, uh, Mrs. York, and she inquired as whether that name can be changed. And I think it can be, with a recommendation from you guys and a, and a council change, but I also feel like the developer needs to be on board and know what's going on and that sort of thing. I did speak with the developer last week, and they were like, we had no idea who Mr. Burrows was, we just bought the property from him, and we'd be open to a suggestion on changing things. So I think tonight, if you can not adopt something, I would appreciate it, cause the developer's not here, he couldn't be here. But if you could maybe take some suggestions, maybe from the neighbors and the Yorks, or suggestions that you guys may have, if you're, would like to change it. And, uh, we can just take a listen from them, the Corey, uh, Martha, and this man Jeff Ginsmore, who's their, uh, site superintendent. We can move it as Burrows Lane, but, uh, I think the Yorks would like to, maybe a consideration to suggesting things, uh, that can be changed. But it is recorded at the courthouse, at Burrows Lane, so it's legal tender now, and we take an action of town council to reverse that. You wanna speak, would you?
I can, I called, do you want me to stand up there?
It'd be great if you turned the microphone off.
I'm Patricia York, and we've lived down there in Rolling Acres subdivision, um, for forty-three years, been members of the town for fifty years. Um, so I think I've spoken with everyone here, I'm not sure if I've missed anybody, but, um, I was not, we were not under the impression that the road was still called Burrows Road or Burrows Lane, or whatever it is, until just recently, which is a concern, and I've voiced, voiced our opinions on that. There are other landowners, property owners in the area that have such concerns as well. We have several new members in the neighborhood that are not aware of the situation, and there are future landowners in the area that have no idea. I certainly would not want my address to be associated with such a crime, and as I've mentioned in the past, in, in my conversations to you. Um, the original subdivision was called Rolling Acres, a lot of members in the town know this. Uh, my suggestion is to rename the road, um, something that is familiar with a lot of property owners. Does not have any ramifications concerning any illegal activity that was conducted by an individual. Um, so I thought, and other neighbors have thought, Rolling Acres would be an appropriate name for the road. I don't know for sure if there is a possibility of future development past College Road, um, going parallel to Beach Cliff. If that's the case, it looks like that may continue into College Road, I don't know how that would work. If that's the case, then College Road curving back towards the new cul-de-sac division wouldn't be an appropriate name, if College Road were, were to continue straight. Um, so that's why I threw Rolling Acres out there, along with some other neighbors that were in agreement to it. So whatever the name is, will be an improvement over the existing name that is in the plat or in the courthouse records. Um, certainly, to address the problem now will prevent any future such inquiries or requests by other landowners, once they, they know what the situation is. Thank you, appreciate your time.
If I may, our subdivision ordinance does say pretty clearly that the planning commission will make recommendation on subdivision plat, and that's why we bring in you our next item, is a different subdivision on the other. Um, and how that was handled back then, I just don't know, I don't know if there's much of a discussion, I don't even know if the town council or the planning commission reviewed the plat back then. But I do know there were some holes in it, I do know it's recorded, I do know that, uh, we had some bond issues that we discussed, and I think we're headed, trending in the right direction. I'm pleased to say that, uh, I think we have some understanding from the developers, and, and they've been acquiescent to, to, to the request from the town. Uh, I just don't know how that was handled in two thousand and seven, I don't know if you guys were ever notified or.
We were never notified of any name change or, or name proposal of Burrows Road, we were never notified. We found out after the fact, when we saw the plat that had been distributed later. You know, I don't think you were here then, but the meeting was ver- very, um, this room was full of people that.
Oh, was there, was there a town council meeting?
Oh, there was, concerning, the whole thing was surrounding the addition of a assisted living or a residential care facility. And that's what it was all about, and the road issue was the concern that we all had at that time, but I don't know that we ever saw the name Burrows Lane. And of course, back then, I don't think the crime occurred, it was after.
It was no big deal then, right?
So, never realized that it could, it was recorded in the county that way.
I have seen on, on a phone, a preliminary that would have additional units in the back, uh, I haven't seen the road layout, but they're they haven't even started the first house down there, so I don't know what the expulsion would be, or how quickly, or how.
Well, we had surveyors out there this week that were, were checking the land to the side of us, and that would extend parallel to, um, Beach Cliff Road. And so he was approached, Jimmy talked to him, he was approached by the current developer to get some, um, surveying done, because I, I understand there's interest by that developer to purchase that land as well, I thought it had already been done.
It has been purchased.
It has been purchased.
He bought the whole thing.
Okay.
He's bought the entire tract.
So anyway, he was out there surveying again, for some reason.
For the second phase, I assume, that makes sense, but, but I don't know, but I have seen a phone, our, our local surveyor, Jeff L. Bell, I assume was the same guy, the same group, and he had a, like a layout, not a scaled layout, but he had a layout on the front, and College Road would go straight.
Straight through, so if it does that, then it makes more sense to, when that new cul-de-sac road goes in, to rename it something.
Rename it something other than College Road, I think you're right there. Rolling Acres Road, do you have any others?
Anything else could work.
Or Lane.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I think there is something that roads are supposed to be north-south, or streets are north-south and roads are east-west, I don't know.
We're not sure how the road name College Road came into being, because it was across from, uh, Ten Street is College Avenue, so we're not really sure what happened with that.
I'm sure when they filed the subdivision plat for having it forward.
Oh, it is very confusing, we have more people going down College Avan, coming to College Road that should have been on College Avenue, and addresses.
You would be horrified if it was Rolling Acres Lane, or something like that, just as long as it's Rolling Acres or something other than.
Right.
Rolling Acres Lane, or Rolling Acres Drive.
We call it Eddie Nash Lane, it'd be fun.
You don't want that after my purse.
Do you guys have any suggestions in addition?
I agree with what he said, you wouldn't want the name after a purse.
Now, don't do that, that sign would be stolen, found in various levels of disarray. Suggestions, if you think of any, I can pass them on to Ms. York, I can pass them on to court, um, but if we can come back at our next planning commission and, and make a formal recommendation, that's unfortunate.
If I just add one thing, neighbors that have lived in that area for a long period of time always thought that our road would be named Co-, um, Rolling Acres Road, instead of College Road.
It was originally the plat.
It was, originally.
It was Rolling Acres, we were Route One.
So.
Uh, Blackstone with Rolling Acres and the plat.
We always assumed it would be called Rolling Acres Road, it never was, and it, it added College Road to it.
Oh, going down from Beach Cliff, down Yaw's Way, I guess.
Well, Beach Cliff didn't even exist then.
Yeah, it did.
It wasn't, there was no homes on Beach Cliff.
Yeah, well, I do read, and they enjoy them.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
And Johnny Pope.
Yeah.
Sounds good, look, like the.
We'll bring it back to the next planning commission, but I'll propose Rolling Acres whatever to court and the developer, and see if he's agreeable with it, if so, we can.
Yeah, I think we're certainly inclined to do that.
Well, if, if, if the developers agree with it, then, like she said, the neighbors wanted them.
Well, if court comes back to me and says, well, we've been thinking about it, and how about this, I'll present that to you guys, and you circulate there in our neighborhood, and make sure there's nobody with any issue.
I called him today to leave a message, but I didn't get in touch with them, so he'll probably call me back, but.
And I didn't talk to Corey, I talked to his name Jeff Ginsmore, who is the superintendent.
And I feel certain that he's not aware of the history, otherwise he probably would agree to go ahead and.
Jeff told me he had no idea. All right, good to be in touch.
Thanks for coming.
Last item up for bid is the Lester Street subdivision. This land has been knocked around and bounced around more times than I can probably tell you. Um, this is the same property that was sold originally by Christine Hardaway to, uh, Frankie Williamson. Frankie Williamson approached this body and town council, probably three years ago or four years ago, and rezoned the property from R two to R three to permit the construction of multifamily dwellings. And I think Frankie's original plan had seventy-seven units in it, okay? The property was subsequently sold to Blackstone Investment LLC, okay? They purchased it, and then the BZA members may remember, they came and asked for a variance on the number of parking spaces just within the past few months, okay? Now, they've come back to me and said, we've decided we wanna do single family homes. And in order to do single family homes, they're gonna have to subdivide the property. And I will tell you, this subdivision meets the minimum standards, but again, they can't use Powell Street, okay? Because as we learned, Powell Street is a platted street, it is recorded at the courthouse, but platted prior to nineteen seventy-one, the town council had to formally accept the streets into the system, and it was done, Powell Street was done in nineteen twenty-four, and we couldn't find the minutes going back that far. So we can say it was done correctly, but we just don't know, so we finally worked out with Annie Williams and her family, who's an adjacent property owner, in regards to a sewer line location. Each of these lots has to have eighty feet of street frontage, or be eighty feet wide at the building lot line. And you can see each of those, those ones in the back are over a hundred and thirty feet wide, and if you look at the, uh, chart, if you look at any of those, like L seven, or excuse me, L eight? Which is down at the bottom?
Eighty-nine.
L six or L twelve, if you look at those, L eight is eighty-nine feet, L six is eighty-nine feet, and L twelve is beep, eighty-nine feet, okay? So these do meet the minimum subdivision standards, how can they do flag lots? We permit flag lots that say, you must, they, they must abut at least twenty-five feet on a publicly maintained street, but must be eighty feet wide at the building lot line, which means thirty-five feet from the, and if you disregard the flag, cause that doesn't count. The building lot line will be thirty-five feet back from here, and these are approximately rectangular, so we know by those distances, they're gonna have the eighty feet width for the same. The intention is to put modular homes there, uh, which are permissible, it's not a manufactured home, and a manufactured home, because it is zoned R three, could be one of the, the, the items, but I'd have to go back and look to see if it was done as a conditional rezoning, that would be apartments only. If they wanted to put double wides in there, I would not give them the permission until I went back and read the minutes, to make sure it wasn't done as a conditional for the apartments. Cause done, done as a just a general, uh, rezoning, R three does permit double wide homes to be placed there. But market wise, I think it's no secret, and it was in the paper, how much was paid for the lot, I think it has to hold a much higher value home, um, than a double wide manufactured home. R three, which is this rust color. And, and something, and right here, this is the property right here, that's in question, it's zoned R three, okay? But the developers have proposed that they're gonna put modular homes in there, I think they're gonna be a cardinal home, right, is the intention?
It's been kicked around more times than any other property in the town, it's probably been a, either planning commission or BZA, three or four times.
But the original plan was for.
Originally, when Ms. Hardaway owned it, it was zoned to R two, which was from the townhouse, duplex, single family home, modular or stick built. It was rezoned to R three with the intention that they were gonna put apartments there, that was the plan, that's why it was rezoned. Now they're coming back, and the R three zoning says you gotta meet the R two single family standards, and that's the R two single family standard. Eighty foot wide, not less than twenty-five feet on a flag lot.
So what was Blackstone Investment's original plan, because that's the one that's for apartments.
We went to the board zoning appeals, and I think it was eighty-three apartments, Frankie had seventy-some, and he had the densities to build as many as eighty-three apartments, if I'm correct, and I know.
Yeah, it was seventy, eighty.
And he asked for a, a variance on the number of parking spaces, typically we have two per unit.
He wanted one and a half.
And he came back, I think the one and a half.
One and a half.
Unit or something like that, and that he would, uh, if it wasn't a one bedroom, then they would meet the two, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, the only variance was for the single bed.
Yeah. But this is the layout of the subdivision, it's not the use, uh, that we were expecting, but, uh, in order for a subdivision plat to be recorded, it has to go through planning commission. Not necessarily a public hearing, the planning commission makes a recommendation to town council, if you have changes and modifications. I know you're just kinda looking at this for the first time, if you'd like to wait a little while, you can do that, um, but I do think it's in sixty days that you'll pass it on to the, um, town council.
Can a subdivision recommendation be conditional?
I've never heard of one, I've never heard one, it ain't a mixed rule or nothing, we're not talking about usage. Double wide, single wide, stick built, that's him in the rezoning or the zoning process, this is, this is what we need to start.
Well, this is a lot less intensive use, it's not the prettiest thing, but, uh. But it meets all, it meets all the requirements, correct?
It meets the minimum requirement, yeah. Now, when he comes to get a building permit, he's gonna have to meet the zoning standards for setbacks, those kinds of things, and, um, I think this plat does have some things that are gonna have to be added to it. Such as, we need to make sure, um, that all lots are required, well, we've got right here, all lots shown may require a sewage pump system, but we need to say that all lots shall be connected to the town's water and sewer, irregardless of left or right, wherever it's gonna be, we may need to change the notes a little bit. Just to make sure that everybody understands, it's not gonna be a sewer pump station going to a drain field back there.
And the entrance would be on Lester Street?
All entrances are coming off Lester Street, because we know Powell Street is suspect, I bet, so I told them, you can't subdivide off Powell Street.
Don't wanna go through with them sisters again, don't wanna go through with them sisters again.
Got an answer, one time from our attorney, we don't need to pay for his license again.
Yeah, she did.
She's probably been.
But Gerald, Gerald's in charge now. But Gerald, Gerald's in charge, yeah.
And.
Well, if you've gone from seventy to eighty apartment units to six houses, that's.
Single-family house.
Quite a difference.
If, if we approve this, can they go back to apartments?
Yeah, yeah, he could unsubdivide it.
Yeah.
Yeah, he can go back to apartments. Still has the zoning appropriate, uh, and that may happen.
In other words, he's not sure what he's gonna do.
He asked me if he should order a house, and I said, well, I'll tell you what, you're doing it on your own risk, but you are entitled to put one house over there now without subdividing it. One piece of land, you can just take a house on there without any question or issue, um.
I think you could put three, actually. Didn't we zone it that way? Three ha- three houses fronting the apartments?
Three houses in front, that's what he said he had to do, but he still had to subdivide the individual units off there. With the apartments, he didn't have to do a subdivision. But each single-family home has to be on a separately-platted parcel. Only one activity or use is permissible per lot. Apartments are the use, single-family is the, so, give one house per lot.
Gotcha, I'm just remembering when he came to the rezoning for the.
It wasn't that long ago, we went over this stuff, yeah.
Yeah, it was for the parking spaces.
That's right.
Mentioned three houses across the front, and, uh.
And again, he wanted to use some of Powell Street to maybe maximize more lots, um, but I told him they couldn't use Powell Street, because we know enough, and Tessie knows enough about Powell Street to say, we can't find the minutes from nineteen twenty-four, so to find that it's usable or public, or was properly dedicated to the town. They couldn't find the minutes in nineteen twenty-four, so we couldn't prove it.
Well, if it meets all the requirements, it's out of the equation.
So you're saying this meets all the requirements?
This meets the minimum requirements, yeah. I can't say it's the prettiest thing, and Dennis, I think, may have hit it on the head. It, it's legal by our subdivision ordinance. I think I may need to check on some of the scale and those kinds of things to comply. If you read the subdivision ordinance, it's got, the plat's gotta be a certain scale, and I gotta go back and double-check that, but, and I can handle that administratively. The question is, and, and the lot sizes won't change, it's just the notes and signature spaces and that sort of thing.
Are these gonna be rentals or for sale?
There's no specific requirement that they be owner-occupied.
I don't know if they have said anything.
They could be rentals.
Yeah, lots, lot one, two, and three that are fronting Lester Street there.
Mm-hmm.
How, how's the access gonna be done to lots, uh, four, five, and six, when there's no Powell Street?
They're coming out of Lester Street.
They're coming into Lester Street, on that little, that little flag pole.
That little strip right there.
That's the little strip, yeah, because the ordinance says each lot must abut a publicly maintained street.
That's, that's the access right there.
For a minimum twenty-five feet, which permits the flag, but it has to open up to at least eighty feet at the building lot line.
Yeah.
So this is where they come in?
Yeah, they build a separate private driveway around each of them.
And then they can come in this way too?
Yep, for that particular lot.
So this one or this one?
Now, again, some of the things I may ask him to commodify a little bit, I wanna sit down with Dan Martin, and make sure he doesn't need any electric easements or anything like that that we can go ahead and have granted in this process, uh, in this department.
So for those, for that access going in, are there any requirements on those roads?
Grabble driveway.
They can just be a gravel driveway.
Serving one home, yeah. If we were to run a cul-de-sac up in there and divide several lots off the cul-de-sac, that would have to be a B-Dot-C in a roadway, Burrows Lane or Rollin' Acres Lane.
That's where I'm heading.
Minimum standard, and without spending any extra money. Now, the notation about using sewage pump is, I don't know what the elevations are on these lots in the back, and even this lot down here. Got the last sewer line, there's a manhole right here, and the other manhole, and he doesn't wanna build that down this portion of Powell Street going back to West entrance, that doesn't make good sense. So he may have to pump each of these to get in that manhole.
So then, these three facing Lester, you're just gonna pull into a driveway, but then this, this, and this are taken on the hand.
Longer gravel driveway.
Yep.
And it looks like the smallest, smallest lot width in the back would be somewhere around a hundred and fourteen feet.
They're actually pretty big lots. I think the ones in the back are almost three-quarters of an acre, and the ones in the front are almost an acre.
Yeah.
They're not tiny little postage stamps, for sure. But.
So what do you need to prove?
About with Dan, and a couple of the things administratively, correct of Ms. Lepel and Blackstone Investment, where they put investment twice.
Investment, investment, yeah. Yeah, I, I don't think we have any reason to disapprove it.
I don't think you do either. If aesthetic's for the problem, then we'd need to change the order. If you don't like flag lots, or you don't like those kinds of things, I think the town would be within its rights to. So you can only have, so what we do in Amelia is you can only have so many flag lots per acre. If you got fifty acres, you get one flag lot. If you've got so many more acres, you get an additional flag lot. And that's, but that's rural development, and that's, that's a whole different show out of the country. What you don't wanna do is, you don't wanna just strip your property, or a lot of developers will begin to avoid building roads. You just laying clothes for years, you know, they just strip them down the road. Not in County, as you strip them. And, um, in Amelia County, you can only do four on the road before you have to build a internal street.
Yeah. They did them out, uh, near, uh, out, out Hungry Town Road, they did a bunch like that at one time, at any rate. So we just give a recommendation and pass it on to council?
For our subdivision ordinance, it says, without a public hearing, the planning commission will consider it and make a recommendation to council, uh, within sixty days of its presentation, or the planning commission.
Alright, Mr.
I'd make a motion to pass it on to council.
Second, anybody's.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
You know, Jennifer, when we sit here, I want to ask you a question about what's going on around town, development project, growth, anything?
Can we close our?
Pardon?
We've closed our meeting, yeah.
Yeah, would you like to adjourn?
Yes, I would like to adjourn before we.
You want them to stay at the full board, the council here or committee here?
Six fifty to seven P.M., and we will adjourn, and let me cut everything off.